As seven oh three, I'd like to convene the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Wakefield Planning Board. Uh, I'll start with a roll call attendance. Uh, Bill Spalding.
Here.
There we go. Perfect. Thank you. Uh, Kevin York. And myself here as well. Uh, so four members of the planning board are here, uh, with the annual in attendance. Uh, so item number two is approval of the meeting minutes from September twenty third, twenty twenty five. Uh, does any member of the planning board have any comments that they wish to provide on the meeting minutes as presented? Do I hear a motion to accept the meeting minutes from September?
Oh, I had a comment. My name spelled incorrectly. It's it's I N, not Ian. But other than that, they were great.
So in that case, do I hear a motion to accept the meeting minutes, uh, so long as they are corrected for this name selling?
Motion to accept.
I got motion by Kevin, uh, seconded by Kristen. Roll call vote, Bill?
Yes.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, as well. Motion passes. Uh, so with that, I'll move on to item number three, the public hearing for the zoning bylaw recalcification. I I will turn over to Chair Lieber.
Thank you very much. So Dan Lieber, Chair of the Bylaw Review Committee. I've had the privilege of working with ten esteemed citizens, nine nine co- co-citizens. Uh, in addition to myself, working on the recalcification of the zoning bylaws, which hasn't been done if ever in Wakefield. So enough at least around forty years. We had the foresight from the prior bylaw review committee. They convened last about five years ago to have a dedicated attorney, which happened to be Attorney Bobrovsky. To be special counsel for this purpose, and there was funding approved by Tom Meeting in twenty twenty one for this purpose. So with that, we were able to retain Attorney Bobrovsky, go through the entirety of chapter one ninety, the zoning. And proposal is to replace the entirety of the text, keeping the existing maps, keeping the existing dimensional regulations. And simplifying the process significantly and making it clear for applicants as well as the judiciary boards. And planning board as to what the intent of the zoning really is. And hopefully make it easier as planning continues in particular. The updates can be done in a way that is consistent. And again, enables the town to retain its character, grow in an appropriate manner, foster development. And have an incredibly good way of life for us as citizens. So those are the the key elements of it. It was a lot of language changes, a lot of moving things around and updating things for the current messages, general laws. And we had a through a a few curveballs thrown in with laws that the legislature decided to make substantive changes to zoning. In the meantime, and those have been incorporated as well. So that would be things such as the ADUs and the MBTA zoning. Which the town has already previously adopted. So those get re-recatified as well. So with that, Attorney Bobrovsky, if you want to, uh, just very quickly. E- explain what some of the some of the differences are in updates. And then if there is any questions, certainly, I'm sure the the county board and others may may have probably field those.
Um, before you do that, I just want to step in for a second. So just for anyone who's either on the call or reviewing this, uh. Uh, subsequently, uh, my understanding is where you guys are is you guys have presented to town council. And the town council take a vote as it relates to any formal action from that body?
Not from the town council because this being brought directly to the town meeting by the bylaw review committee as a multiple member by.
And so the purpose of this public hearing for folks who are who are aware is is the the as this is related to zoning, the planning board. Uh, we are expected to provide a recommendation to whether to approve or to disapprove of this. So we're here for a public hearing to both educate the public and advance the town meeting as well as to take input as it relates to what whether the planning board should. Provide a recommendation either to approve or to disapprove of this. So just want to set those ground model expectations. Nothing's going to be passed today, and we'll go to a formal town meeting vote, uh, in a couple of weeks. So with that, Attorney Bobrovsky, if you want to take it away?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dan. Uh, it's been my pleasure to work with Wakefield officials and volunteers over the past two years now. Trying to get this thing ready for town meeting. Um, I know that the town council, the planning board and the zoning board of appeals have all reviewed it. There have been some prominent, uh, citizens, for example, Attorney McGrail has gone through the last draft. Painstaking notes. I incorporated as many of those as I can. Eric Reed has done yeoman's work in terms of giving me some comments. And, um, I think we finally got something that we can put together. I I would say that the changes are for the most part focused on changes in statute, which is the curse of recatification. In the middle of the job here, trying to figure out what the what the legislature meant, and you have to find a place to add it. But I think we've done that as well. The ADUs are probably a prominent example of that. Uh, but also changes in case law. Uh, very subtle changes sometimes come out of the land court, but the land court is so well versed in land use law that you want to take. The guidance that they're offering in advance of an appellate case. So for example, on site plan review. Judge Foster, the land court ruled that in order to have a direct appeal of that to superior land court. Which you have to put in your own bylaw, there's no guidance in the statute. You must hold a public hearing, and there must be a record. Makes common sense. So I've added pieces like that to, um, various places in the bylaw. Uh, I would say that the use table has some interesting features that we talked about, for example, um, brewery. Uh, and I believe distillery is one of them in the use stable. But other than that, it's 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 pretty much more user friendly, uh, not major changes. I would say roughly seventy percent of the bylaw is just reorganized and, uh. Put it in a more common sense place. The old the old bylaw was sort of scattered about. We didn't really know what the next topic would be. So I'm happy to answer any questions if people have specific locations in the bylaw they'd like me to discuss.
Uh, so thank you for that. Uh, before we pit a couple of comments from other members of the planning board, I'd like to take this opportunity to just first off, thank. Both Attorney Bobrovsky for helping the town of Wakefield in your capacity, as well as Chair Lieber and all the other members of the bylaw review committee. Including our own Kevin York. Uh, I know it's been a, like you mentioned, a two-year process, and it's been, uh, I I know a lot of work. And there's a lot of text and very technical detail, and definitely very appreciative of all of your efforts. Uh, and it definitely does not go unnoticed. So with that being said, uh, any other members of the planning board wish to have any comments, feel free to raise your hand. Mr. Spalding?
Thank you, Jim. Um, and thank you, um, Dan and Mr. Bobrovsky. It's been really cool to, um. See the evolution of this. I know. When I first came on to the planning board, working with our former town planner, um, Paul Revus. And really having a hard time trying to understand and connect. And I feel in this process over the last two years, it's really helped to connect all those pieces. I guess, um, I don't really have any comments because I think we've been going along with this process. But I'm wondering if, um, Dan, if i- is there an opportunity in full transparency? As this goes to town meeting, that you're going to, um, share the amount of time and involvement? As like a prelude to the actual, um, sharing at town meeting?
So yes, I do plan on talking a little bit about that. It probably won't. I I don't want to focus on the amount of time. Specifically for zoning recalcification as a part of this article. It will, it will come up, I'm sure, i- if not for this article, then for the article where we hand our final report. To the town meeting and get discharge in the in the process. Because that's where I will, as part of that report preparation, figure out how many actual meetings we had. And I take a guesstimate is to the number of hours and people that were involved with it, which is a very large number.
Okay, that sounds great. I think it's just important, as you know, at on the town meeting floor, it's just good to to hear that as a prelude. To set up all the information. Thanks.
Absolutely. And and I agree, it'll for the the presentation, the anticipation is that it will talk about the amount of time. As opposed to the number of meetings, because that's where.
Yeah.
It it'll have value to people to understand this is a multi-year process with lots of collaboration across the world. That's the the piece that I really want to try and stress in the opening remarks to it. Otherwise. Trying to go with the motto, uh, less is more for town meeting. People have questions and so forth, similarly to here. Attorney Bobrovsky is the preeminent expert. He understands the all of the language and components in this and can interpret it extraordinarily well. And and I think that if we try to do too much presentation, it will just introduce confusion.
Okay, thanks.
Right, right. Mr. Chairman, this is the the current draft advertised for this public hearing is draft eleven of the bylaw. And, uh, every one of those was a, not just a small change for, at the end, it gets easier. But, uh, but eleven drafts is a not a lot of drafts, so.
Yeah, and and I think you your your efforts as well as the the rest of the bylaw review changes to the amended. The fact that we're at eleven, and I I know after going through a couple of them, you know, when you present our board and took our feedback. Um, that you guys did kept an open mind and were able to really get a lot of feedback and get to what I would deem as a good consensus. Uh, understanding that there are some changes on the edges based on case law and the other others you mentioned. But generally substantively similar to what we had previously, but organized in a manner such that I think it's going to be more conducive to. People actually understanding it, to your point, the organization previously left something wanting. Um, any other members of the planning board that wish to say anything before I open it to public comment? Uh, not seeing anything, then, uh, I'll move this over to public comment. Uh, if anyone wishes to, uh, speak, please raise your hand. In the Zoom, and if you are called upon, please, uh, say your name and your address prior to providing said public comment. Uh, so I see Attorney McGrail.
Whoops. Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrail, eighty-one Outlook Road in Wakefield. Here's a citizen tonight. I just wanted to take a minute, uh, to show up and commend and thank the, um. Um, Bylaw Review Committee, uh, DM Lieber is chair and all the members, Kevin York, you're a member of your board. Um, I attended a lot of these meetings, um, and also Mark Bobrovsky, who is a leader and probably one of the most respected attorneys in my field. Uh, and the Commonwealth, and I wish him a happy retirement. Now that this is done, Mark, he can finally retire. Um, but in any event, I just wanted to take note of the or make note of the hard work that went into this. Uh, by all of the, uh, members of the committee led by Dan. Um, this was amazing because the ground was moving underneath their feet as they did this, uh, ADU, MBTA. So there were a lot of roadblocks that were put up, uh, but I think the end product is a really good product for the town. And, um, as a citizen, I appreciate all the hard work that they all put into it.
Thank you. Uh, any other members of the public wish to speak at this time?
Hi, yes. My name is Eric Reed. I attended the planning board meetings in sixty-nine when they did not have any zoning for apartments. I have seen the, uh, seventy-five certification for zoning, it just reverses Florida fields. Nothing else, nothing special. Um, I have been looking at the thing and I took about ten to twelve little errors. This is a repeat of what I sent my email and this is to you and the whatever the first page of the changes. The second page I have to change is in page order to be quickly done. And I have on the third page a chart of. Yeah, you'll see all these special things and they either work with the CBA, the planning board, or a combination of three boards. I don't know if you want that information somewhere or not, but that's anyway, put it together for your information. And, uh. Probably the chance to. So the question is, how do I need changes significant enough to change before town meeting? All wrapped down with you? It's a confusion to me. So I I pointed this out really good on a few people.
Okay. Well, thank you for, uh, for that written set of comments. Uh, I think that a copy could give it to Chair Lieber and that you're, uh, you're going to review the balance of the bylaw review committee as it relates to. What can or what cannot be accommodated, correct?
Correct. Attorney Bobrovsky is really is falls into your area for the Scrivners, the types of notes and typos and things like that. Is there any issue with making those updates and publishing some of the things that literally was just typos? That had somehow gotten through. A a couple of them.
Some of these look familiar, and I'm going to have to look at the bylaw to see. For example, um, Mr. Reed had given me a number of different memos like this, and I tried to incorporate as much of it as I could. The first time the language, uh, describing the special permit granting authority is used. Um, it might, it's generally capitalized and spelled out. The second time it will be SPGA. So I just, I I I need to be able to correlate what he's saying here with that general principle. And I know we're going to meet again on the twenty-eighth, so I'll have an answer for you then.
Okay. Uh, any other comments? Okay. Well, thank you very much for, uh, the detailed review and checking, checking that all the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, any other members of the public? Uh, not seeing anything. Any other members have any other help? That's going? Uh, any other, anyone else have any other comments on this prior to, uh, us closing this? Right now, we are currently scheduled to have another public hearing on our next regularly scheduled meeting, October twenty eighth, virtually. For anyone who wish to attend, I anticipate based on the previous conversations with the board that we will take a vote at that time whether or not to. Approve or recommend approval or disapproval at town meeting. Okay, uh, I'm going to close item number three. Thank you for for coming and attending and, uh.
Thank you.
Uh, in some respects, I'm glad that no one came, or besides one member of the public. Oh, fair enough. Um, okay. Well, in that case, uh, item number three is closed. I'll proceed to item number four. This is one fifty-eight, one, the one fifty-four, one fifty, Salentry subdivision, a, uh. We were ready and scheduled to have a public hearing associated with that, uh, with that project. However, Attorney McGrail reached out and requested a continuance to our October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting. On the basis that, um, there's been some continued, uh, dialogue between the projects and the town engineer. He anticipated that they're going to have the final set of comments from bill or note or the next meeting if you want to have. A public hearing with no substantive update. So, um, I believe we do need to take a vote as a board to continue the public hearing. So do I hear a motion to continue the one fifty-four, one fifty-eight, Salentry subdivision, public hearing to October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five? Motion by Kristen, do I hear a second?
Second.
So motion by Kristen, I guess second by Bill, we can just beat you by the air it, uh, roll call vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Uh, Kristen? Yes, and myself, yes, as well. So motion passes four to nothing. Uh, in that case, I'll move on to item number five, items not submitted by the chair. So the only thing I have, I wanted to bring up before I put it to other members of the planning board is. Uh, I received some email correspondence related to our, uh, the previously discussed tree over at one ninety-seven. The hot street, as members of the board may or may recall, this is the project where we grant this subdivision. The parcel was sold during construction. There's, uh, multiple, uh, observations of deficiencies related to. Construction needs and methods for. Uh, drainage control as well as tree protection and the tree we were, we issued a letter to the developer. And they'd issued us a letter back related to the tree. Um, and so they showed recently, um, specifically the owners and the owner of the property. Uh, and related to the current health of the tree and, uh, the fact that it's posing a hazard. So. Marissa, do you want anything to give us more color? I know there's some other back and forth that's been occurred between the town and, uh, property owners.
Sure, yeah. So I received maybe toward the end of was the week preceding town day. Because then I ended up meeting this about our at-town day. Uh, but he is one of the next four neighbors. His name is Denny to the property at one ninety-seven, one ninety-nine, a hot street. And he was present at all the public hearings. Um, and he was under the impression that. The it was part of the condition of the subdivision approval that the tree had to stay, that the property owner was not allowed to to cut down this tree. And, um, there were during construction, there were branches that were cut down. Now the tree, the trunk of the tree is split. And it is posing a posing a safety hazard to his property. And he expressed his frustration at the fact that the tree was, or that the branches of the tree were cut. Even though the property owner theoretically was not supposed to, and now there's a safety hazard, he wants it removed. Um, and, you know, I explained, I wasn't there during the public hearing process. I started after. But it's, I, you know, in having reviewed the conditions of approval for the subdivision. The only conditions that I'm receiving that I'm seeing with respect to the tree are that it be protected during construction with the installation of a fence around it. Nothing that tells me that the tree has to stay or that it, um, that it may not be removed. In in practice, it's also my understanding that, you know, property owners are allowed to remove trees at their own discretion. They don't have to seek permission from any staff or board in in any municipality. I think it's part of your property rights as an owner that that you can remove trees. Unless maybe they are within the jurisdiction of the conservation commission, I mean, might have to seek approvals for that. But otherwise, you know, tree removal is at the discretion of the property owner. Um, and, uh, you know, I I I explained that to him. Um, he was, you know, upset because I think he thought that. Again, that the tree had to stay and that was part of the condition of approval, and he said that he, uh. He was only inclined to agree with the approval of this project because he thought the tree was staying. Again, I don't. I don't believe that that's the case, and my review of this condition of approval is also, you know, is is sustaining my belief that that that's not the case either. Um, and so we sort of lifted at that. Um, and then I received an email and then a follow-up phone call from the other property owner. Uh, on the other side who showed me who sent pictures of the tree trunk that is split. And he said that he would like to remove, or he he wants the property owner to remove the tree. He didn't say one way or the other that he was, you know, frustrated or upset with the fact. The tree was tampered with, I suppose, but, um, he just wants it removed. He tried to talk to the contractor that's there on site right now. The contractor responded that he had to get special permit to remove the trees or to remove the tree because that was part of the condition of approval. And, um, so I'm working with the building department to see how I can get in touch with that contractor just to let him know that. You don't have to go through, and that's just like permitting to have that tree removed, but, um. I reached out to Jim amidst all this because, you know, I was just wondering what, I wanted to know more about the the substance of the discussion that the planning board did have throughout the public hearing process. And, um, you know, understand whether or not it was a violation of the condition of approval that the tree was actually, you know, that branches were removed during construction. The tree was supposed to be protected and whether or not that, you know, that it was in perpetuity or not, it it still was harmed during construction. Um, and so that's, is there fence around it? Like. I have a driven by the property. I think, uh, one of the property owners or a neighbor, sorry, Jim, did tell me that there is one of those orange plastic fences around it.
There is now, but, uh, substantive damage occurred prior to the mobilization of fence. I think, Bill, I recall, I can't remember if it was yourself or or Matt, who wouldn't actually visited during construction and alerted the board to that nonperformance?
Uh, both. So Matt went by and visited. Um, I followed up with a letter and another visit. Um, I got there after there was some rain just to see where it was all going. And yes, it was pretty much channeling down to the backside to a neighbor's yard. So they, we asked for them to install the, um, drainage control, and they did. Um, it was there, I can't remember how many weeks. It was probably like a week or two after they did install that. Um, if you've been down to Hunt recently, which I have most mornings to drop my son off at school. Um, whatever they did to come back out to the road, that's all sunken down in the the, um. Yeah, the road's a little messed up there. So I'm sure DPW or engineering will, um, have them correct that. But, yeah, the, I I I don't know anything more than that.
I want to ask a really stupid question, but if one of the conditions was that they put a fence around the tree. And then they didn't do that, or maybe they did, but regardless, the the tree was damaged during construction, which was the point was that it not be damaged during construction. And now we're saying, well, it's okay to take down the tree. I mean, isn't it just incentive for people to not follow any guidelines we put in place? Regarding trees, like, just because if we don't, you know, you'll be able to do what you wanted to in the first place.
I I remember repercussions for not following what we discussed. Was the conversation we had, but ultimately. We realized there were really no repercussions that we could take against them, right? I, that was my recollection. Bill, I saw you raised your hand.
Yeah, this is, this is an ongoing issue, um, very stern letters. Um, the the only backing we have. Is really from the town engineer and the town building inspector. They're the only town officials that could go out. I guess DPW could too if there was some type of issue. But they are the only ones that could go up, go out and really ask them to stop what they're doing or do that. So it's, I I think it starts with our action of a letter addressing the issues and what we see as a solution. And making sure that's followed up. And unfortunately, no, Kristen, we don't have any type of enforcement.
Because it's, so I know in other, I'm guessing Wakefield doesn't have a tree policy. We don't have a lot of things for conservation. So conservation, but the Rettings policy is, at least as I understand it, when I spoke about it, if you take down a tree, you have to basically. Pay to have certain number of trees planted elsewhere in town. I'm guessing we don't have that, but that could be a way to kind of. If we could put something like that, I mean, I know it's would be awfully perfect, but it just, without any ability to actually enforce. This seems like it's a really great way for, for, you know, contractors to get around, basically to be able to do whatever they want.
Well, we did, we did work with, um, Dennis Fazio back maybe about ten years ago. To put together a tree study on what the acceptable trees in town that can be used for street trees. And if we are, um, reviewing definitive subdivision plans and we. Have more control over it at that point, but other than. On the private property, the trees that exist, if we're flagging them and marking them as out of this, um, scope of work. And that's the best we can do. Um, in the past, we have WAT sites with contractors and put tags on trees. We've did, we've done this in the Greenwood section. Um, Matt and I went out and tagged a bunch of trees that we wanted to make sure. Were kept. We've also asked for, um, plans to show which trees are are larger than a certain diameter. That way we know what's going on, and that happened at a few of the, um, subdivisions as well. But it's, it's Kristen, it's, it's a difficult part of this and. And maybe Marissa can chime in to what she has for experience, but unless, I think the right. Um, action for us is to write the letter to, um, the contractor or homeowner. And make sure the town engineer and, um, building inspector is aware.
Because even if they're like, even if we're tagging trees and doing a site visit, if they end up deciding to take down the trees, there's no actual.
Correct.
And we don't have a a bylaw in place for the protection of of private trees. Again, unless they're maybe within the jurisdiction of the conservation commission, so within the wetland buffer zone or close within a wetland resource area. But, um, I, um, I was starting to work on something with the tree committee in Swanswick. They, um, they wanted to for the general bylaw at town meeting. They, but I actually like your idea better, sort of like the one for one or maybe like the one for one caliber replacement. Or if you are going. Or if you are going to, you know, to yeah, cut down a tree on your property, maybe make a, like a contribution to the tree fund or something to that aspect. Um, they were starting to explore, you know, getting into setbacks and it felt a little dicey. Um, it, um, but I, I definitely think that something like that could be explored.
I know there's, there are multiple municipalities where if you cut down a tree, that's not allowed, then you have to pay three times the value of the tree, the tree of other.
Yeah.
So, so what one?
Yeah, I was just thinking of like, you know, from like a, from a plain perspective, from a, a feel of the town. I mean, every tree that we lose is like, is habitat for a bunch of animals. And it's a mature tree most of the time. You're normally cutting down like saplings and then I'll just take my kitchen knife and cut those down.
Right.
But the, I mean, I think it's, it would be good to have something like that in place and also focus on, you know, it's not just us planting any tree. We don't want to plant, nor we may hold. We want to plant like an oak or something that like supports a lot more wildlife. And we should have like multiple trees. It should be four or five trees because probably all five of those is not going to survive. Um, it's going to take many years for them to reach maturity. So, yeah, I, I think that would be, it'd be great if we had something like that. But just because it's, you know, I, I get that like trees can be inconvenient. A lot of buyers will, they focus on, is that tree gonna fall in the house? But I get it. But, yeah.
I had a similar, I had a similar um, reaction to um, some of the subdivisions that we've worked on and learned that through our board, we can create buffer zones through a covenant. So if, for the specific property, and I'm thinking Montrose School Lane, um, there was a buffer zone created. Um, and in that buffer zone, the property owners were not allowed to trim or cut back the trees. But if you could imagine back-to-back houses with a buffer zone, who's going to notice that? We're not going to be policing it. No one else is going to look for it. So we put in the covenant and we asked the abutters to say, hey, if you see something, say something and come to our board. Um, and that's happened twice with Montrose School Lane. Some of the people who live on the out, outer side of the subdivision have come to the board and we've had them replace trees and bushes and plant arboretis and re, because what was happening is because the Montrose School um, subdivision was a little higher up. That was by taking some of the buffer away, the rain was causing the drainage to flood out some of the abutters gardens and that, that's what was happening. So it, it took a lot. In fact, I think a lawyer was involved at some point to make sure it all happened. But that was back in like 2015. Again, there was some issues in 2019. So it's, it's like, if we do a covenant, I think that's the only way that we can make it happen.
I know like some towns will actually like monitor, I mean, usually it's like setbacks, setbacks are related to your uh, related to wetlands, but they will actually like monitor on drones periodically to make sure folks are not like artificially increasing the space in their garden to the wetland. Which I mean, again, beyond our curricula.
Marissa can put it in her budget.
Yeah, yeah. I'll do it for free on the weekends. I think it'd be great fun.
So to, to round this out, I think unless, I, I think we don't have any formal mechanism to, to take any action at this point, but I wanted to make sure that we had this conversation. So um, unless, Bill, you're correct, that is correct, right? There is no formal action that we really can take at this point, right?
Nope.
Yeah. Yeah.
Safety does come first and unfortunately, in this case, that tree, which could have been saved, was not because of, I don't know.
Action.
Lack of due diligence on the contractor's side.
Okay, so that's the, the only item not submitted I had. Does anyone else?
Actually, actually, hold on, excuse me, Mr. Chair. Um, the only other thing we can do, which we have done, is when we collect a surety to that property, we can hold that until they do repair. So Kristen, this has happened in the past too, where if we are holding a certain percentage of that and say it's like $8,700. It's like, no, you can't have that until you repair what was, yeah, was out of the scope of work. So we have done that probably on two projects in, in my experience. So that's another way that we can do that. And that's something that again, we do set up during the um, the covenant or any type, when we are going through any type of waivers and back and forth with the attorneys for the property. And that because, and Marissa, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason we do it through a covenant is because that will transfer to if the, if the property does change um, ownership, which in this case it has, it follows.
Correct.
Yeah.
Definitely a great way to get it done. I mean, everybody wants their money back.
Yep.
Um, anyone else have any other items not submitted by the chair?
I have a, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
Stimming off what Bill said, do we need to document that anywhere for the point when it comes back to us to sign that? So that we, you have the surety or do you have something else? Sure.
I'm trying to pull up what we have for surety on that. I'm not sure we have for surety on that property. Um, so I think if, to your point, if, if that was something that we were interested in doing, I would anticipate that we would need to send something to, to the contractor before we just say, say at the end that we are withholding.
Maybe put that in the letter though, if you don't. Obviously, the tree though, it's like a danger. They need to take it down. But can we then say, well, you're supposed to contain this. You did it. It's not actually let us in this place.
That would be the most logical position for us to take it, if we were so inclined to issue that letter. Cause I'm trying to remember, Bill, I, I'm just racking my brain. I don't remember if we had a surety on that because I don't know if there was any uh, any piece of public infrastructure we dictated as part of that subdivision.
I don't think we did either. And I'm, I'm looking through the documents I have and I, I have the preliminary subdivision plan. And I have, that, no, I don't have anything. I have the letter that we sent um, in January.
Yeah, I'm looking through our conditions and I don't see anything.
Yeah.
In the, the decision itself.
No, I don't see anything either. Matt did the letter in Jan, in, in January and then we followed up with another letter in April. And the limit of work. No, I don't have anything. I actually have a video that I took of the property while it was raining. No, but I don't believe we collected anything with that. And there was no covenant that I remember.
Yeah, I don't have record of a covenant either. So I think for this particular property, we don't have any particular points of leverage, but I think there definitely should take this stuff call it lessons learned for anything, any subdivision that comes with the course again, as it relates to any particular trees that were we're, should it, just make sure that we're managing it with an eye toward enforcement.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, just like for anything that we feel like will need to be enforced for our planting, sort of like whatever drainage, I mean, I guess I probably
Is there anything that the building department does that tracks relationships with contractors? Like, if there's a pattern, not saying that this one is, but if there's a pattern with any particular contractor?
I mean, I, I would imagine that I S T probably has certain
Yeah.
least favorites, but I don't think it's like a formal list of, of bad behavior or anything like that.
I don't think they're legally allowed to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I can dance a little bit slow. You just don't like.
Yeah.
I'm sure that they, I'm sure that they pay attention to, to certain people who have demonstrated non-performance based on just human nature, but I don't think there's like a, a formal list per se.
Sure, they, you know, contractors typically source locally, so I think they start to see the same spaces over and over and they start to, you know, learn people's habits and their way of doing business. It's like, listen, building staff and I expect just probably, probably know how to approach whoever they're working with.
Make their life, I like to call it, yeah, I remember reading this file once. I was like, like, or just a flip, it was just a flip. And basically like there's just like item after item after personals actually writing letters to like, like I, I think it was a little congressperson or somebody like basically complaining about like how, I mean, there was some some errors, but it was like basically just complaint, complaining about like all the things that they had done to go above and beyond what they thought was should be required. It was pretty, it's a flip. And I think it was just because of the gabapetia, they were just making sure you know, up to the, because, because it was a substantial renovation, like after the kind of big skate break and, and local codes and it just made it very difficult.
Anything else on, on this before I potentially move on to the next item not stated? Okay, uh, moving on, does anyone else have any other items not submitted by the chair? Mr. Spaulding?
I am so sorry I missed the um, town day, but man, so many people sent me messages saying how awesome the booth was. And I got pictures from people of the board with the sticky notes. So kudos to Theo and whoever else helped with that. Um, it, it, it looked like it was actually a good time.
It was. It was, um, Theo ran it for the planning board and Kusumi Humphreys from the ZBA. Um, and then I, I joined them for a little bit. Got to introduce myself to a bunch of people. I had a good time. It was a great day.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
All positive feedback from a bunch of people that was wondering where I was.
Awesome. Any other items not anticipated by the chair? Okay, uh, seeing none, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Oh, Susan, before we
Do we, do we have to take a vote to continue the bylaw recodification to October 28th? Like you did for Salem Street?
That is an oversight and I believe you are correct. Uh, so in that case, um, do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing associated with the zoning bylaw recodification to our regularly scheduled October 28th, 2025 meeting?
We should continue the zoning bylaw reclassification to the public hearing on October 28th.
Do I hear a second? Motion by Kevin, second by Kristen, Bill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Kevin?
Yes.
And yes, uh, motion passes. Thank you, Susan, for keeping us honest.
You're welcome.
Uh, anyone else have anything else that I, that I potentially missed before we move to adjourn? Okay, in that case, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Kristen?
Second.
Second by Kevin, roll call, oh, Bill?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Kristen? Me, yes, myself. Thank you everyone and have a great night.
Thank you.